There we go. Okay, I think we have enough now that we got forum and we can get started. So I will call this February 3rd Semamish Planning Commission meeting to order. And I'll do roll call. Mark Baughman, that's me, I'm here. Josh Amato.
Here.
TC Labby.
Hello, hello.
Mike Fresco.
Here.
I don't see Karthik, Karthik Satharman, I don't see him. Karen Malcolm.
I'm here.
And Jerry Norman.
Here.
Jerry, welcome to the Planning Commission. Would you maybe like to take just 30 seconds and tell the commission about yourself?
Well, here I am, the new guy on the block, so. Jerry Norman, I live here with my wife and we've been in Semamish nineteen or twenty years now. Down towards the bottom of Inglewood Hill Road along the Parkway itself. So we're on East L.A. Semamish Parkway. And I'm retired from different kinds of executive work. And my wife is a practicing psychotherapist with an office in Issaquah. So it's great to meet you all. I think I've done my homework to get as reasonably caught up as I can. And I would like to have the freedom to call any of you outside of the meeting format and just ask a little bit about protocol and where to go, who to go ask for information. Is that okay? I see a couple of nods. Yeah, cool. So thanks.
Great. Welcome. And I look forward to the day that we can do this in person. Okay. Amber, do we need to read the meeting accessibility statement?
Yes, I will read that one moment. All right, pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Proclamation 2025, the city is unable to provide an in-person location for the meeting to listen to the virtual planning meeting this evening. Meetings are still accessible to the public and public comment is able to be submitted. To view or join the meeting via Zoom, please use the options of the link in your browser or by calling via mobile or landline 253-215-8782 and enter the webinar code 91076897869. To view live, you can visit the City of Semamish website or City of Semamish YouTube channel or within Semamish view on Comcast Channel 21. To view the meeting later, videos of the meeting are typically available the day after the meeting on the City of Semamish website through the City of Semamish YouTube station or on Comcast Channel 21 within the City of Semamish. Thank you, and back to Chair Baughman.
Thank you. So next, as approval of the agenda, does anybody have any comments about this evening's agenda? Nope, seeing no comments, we'll call the agenda approved by common consent. Next is approval of our minutes from our last meeting, which was January 6th. Does anybody have any corrections or comments about the meeting notes from the January 6th meeting? No, seeing none, we'll call the meeting minutes from January 6th approved. Now we have non-agenda public comment. So this evening we have a presentation on the Community Visioning Project. So if you have public comment about other things other than that, now's the appropriate time. As a reminder, it's three minutes per person or five minutes if you represent an organization. So do we have anyone for public, non-agenda public comment?
Looks like we do have someone ready and I will promote them to speak one moment. Mr. Berry, you are unmuted and able to give comment.
Okay, I don't see myself there. This is Jim Berry. I live at 1810 203rd Avenue Southeast Semamish. Maybe somebody after I comment could tell me where I find the agenda because I went online and the agenda that was there didn't basically say anything except there was a meeting today. I have owned property in what is now Semamish for over forty years. Been a resident, raised my kids here for over thirty years. And my wife and I have been hoping that we will be able to spend a lot more years in Semamish, but we've gotten to the point where we are outgrowing our house or our houses just more than we can handle. And we were very excited four years ago when we heard that there might be some more senior resident options in the city that have seemed to have gone nowhere in the last four years. The last meeting, there was some comment about the fact that we need a broad width of community options for different people at different stages in their life. And somebody brought up the fact that people are leaving. I probably know twenty couples who've left Semamish who would have liked to stay here because there wasn't any option for them that was acceptable. So I would hope that you will do everything you can to move forward at a rapid pace. We think we have two, maybe three more years before we need to make a decision. And I think it's highly unlikely that we will have any new options in that timeframe. But I know that there are probably one or two families every month who are forced to move out of Semamish because there are no options. Thank you for your time.
Thanks for your comments, Jim.
And it doesn't look like we have any other comments, so we can move on to the next item on our agenda.
Okay, thanks, Amber. The next item is a new business item, which is election of chair and vice chair. So this time each year we get to decide who we want to have as chair and vice chair. I will just get out front of this on a couple of things. One, this is always a kind of an interesting process in person. Doing it on the screen on Zoom might be a little bit more challenging, so that's okay. It feels awkward, that's perfectly fine. The other thing is, you know, I will just say that for myself, I, because usually this is a question, one of the first questions. I am perfectly happy to continue as chair or perfectly happy to step away and let someone else serve as chair, so keep that in mind. So here's how the process will work. We'll do chair first and then we'll do vice chair. The duties and responsibilities are pretty straightforward. Chair runs the meeting and coordinates a little bit with staff to prepare for the meeting. Vice chair steps in when the chair is out of pocket for vacation or whatever to run the meeting and also participates in coordinating with the staff, and that's about it. So nothing too tough. The way that this will work this evening is that we nominate someone. You can nominate whoever you want. We can have multiple nominations, that's fine. We give people an opportunity to express their either interest or non-interest. Sometimes someone will be nominated and they're actually not interested, so they get the opportunity to say that. And then we will take a vote and we'll just kind of, if there's multiple nominations, we'll go in the order of the nominations were made. And then we'll do vice chair, same thing. So let's start out with chair. Of course, in some ways I would like to say this is a volunteer exercise and who's interested, but anyone who would like to nominate someone for chair?
Mark, if you're so willing, I'd like to nominate you to rejoin us as the chair again.
Anyone else? Okay, like I said, I'm perfectly willing to keep going, but if someone has a strong passion, I'll let someone else do it too, so.
Why mess with something that's been working so well?
Yeah. It seems to go fine. All right, so then we have to vote. So all those in favor of Mark Baughman as continuing as chair, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no? Okay, so a similar exercise for vice chair. Would anyone like to nominate someone for vice chair?
Since I'm off mute, I would go ahead and nominate Mike as the vice chair if he's so inclined to participate.
You know, maybe next year, this year, I've got like a lot of other responsibilities that have hit. If I do need to fill in, it would be difficult to do the job really well, so I'd prefer to decline for right now. Keep that in mind for next year.
Come on, you don't want to be famous on cable television? Against the internet now.
Wasn't it a cable television station that made Wayne and Garth famous?
Yeah, careful of the comparison you're heading towards there. Okay, anyone else as vice chair? You know, if Mike's.
I would nominate Josh.
Okay, Josh, I'll give you the opportunity to say something if you'd like to.
I'd be happy to do it.
Okay, anyone else? All right, those in favor of Josh as vice chair, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, no? Great. I can't wait to sign you up for all kinds of stuff, Josh.
Wonderful.
Okay, having that out of the way, let's move on to our main discussion topic this evening, which is an update on an old business item, which is the Community Visioning Project. I believe that we'll have a little bit of a presentation and then some discussion. So Sarah, is that you?
Hello, yes. Good evening, commissioners. My name is Sarah Strye. I am management under this with Department of Community Development. Tonight with me, we have Christina Hayworth. She's our consultant who is working with us during this project. And she's going to present you the result of our outreach and what we found. We're also going to share with you the recommended vision statement and happy to hear your feedback. So with that said, I will hand it over to Christina, who is here right now, to start. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me okay? Great. So as Sarah said, my name is Christina Hayworth. I am with OTAC, the consultant selected to help the city with this community visioning project. For those of you I've seen before, it's lovely to see you again. For those of you who are new to the commission, it's lovely to meet you virtually. And let me just go ahead and get the presentation launched. Bear with me one moment. While I get my screen shared. Okay, I hope you all can see this. If you can't, just shout out and let me know that.
Looks like it's working.
Great, glad to hear it. Okay, here we go. Semamish Community Visioning Project Planning Commission, the great unveiling of all of the work that we've done to date. And just a quick refresher, I hope you all had a chance to view the project briefing video just as a quick reminder of the purpose of this project. But for the record and for those who may just be tuning into this project, the goal of this project was to ensure that the city has a strong and clear community vision that shapes the comp plan going forward. The comprehensive plan is on an eight-year update cycle and yours is, your next update is due in 2024. So the community vision statement is an early opportunity to start thinking about how that comprehensive plan is going to be updated, what's changed since the last time the comp plan was updated, how has the community evolved in terms of priorities and values so that, so that the plan is really shaping the future that residents want to see. We started this project by prioritizing outreach and engagement. We talked to hundreds of stakeholders, well, over a thousand responses just received in our survey alone, which I'll get to in a moment. But we talked to a whole variety of people. We focused on residents reaching out to 249 individual contacts at HOEs and property management associations for 401 different different developments in and near the city who are interested in learning about what's happening in Semamish. We did a non-resident survey for people that maybe work in Semamish, live here. We focused a lot on reaching underserved or underrepresented groups. We talked with youth through schools outreach. We reached out to all of the schools within the city and we got engagement with, I believe it was three elementary schools, one middle school and two high schools. We spoke with all of the commissions and with city council at their regular meetings. We also had a great business, business owner forum hosted through the Chamber of Commerce. It was a really extensive process. It was really intended to be as inclusive and as broad as possible. City staff worked really, really hard to make sure that, that this was highly visible, that it was easy to participate in. And so special shout out to the communications group and other city staff for helping make this such a successful outreach project. We had a great response on our survey, so we did, we did a series of surveys. So what I've called the community survey was a kind of a two-part survey where we had the statistically valid portion that was mailed to just shy of 5,000, 5,000 randomly selected households within the city. And then we had a very similar public open link version online that was, they had the same questions. They were maybe just tweaked because they were presented digitally instead of on a paper, paper survey. We had well over a thousand responses. The statistically valid survey had a 16% response rate, which is just outstanding. Excuse me, we typically expect to see half of that in a community like Semamish anywhere else in the country. So having, having twice a normal response rate just really, I think demonstrates how, how committed residents are to making their voices heard and how excited they are to participate in this process. And I hope that it is a hint of things to come as the comp plan update gets rolling. So it was a really encouraging sample size for that. We also had a non-resident survey. This was, this was driven mostly through, sorry, participation in this was driven mostly through online venues. It was an online survey. And so we had a very, a very small response pool of about eighteen respondents here that I still, I think provided some very valuable information that we'll talk a little bit about later as well. All right, so we did all of this engagement and here's what we heard from our project. So the big picture findings, the big takeaway from, from the survey as well as from all of the other engagement efforts that we went through is that a lot of concepts in the 2015 vision statement really continue to resonate with residents here in the city. That includes this emphasis on environmental preservation and enhancement, a focus on maintaining the peace and quiet in our neighborhoods in Semamish and a culture of safety and friendliness, which is called a family-friendly could say culture in the 2015 vision statement. So these things continue to remain very important to residents. We heard feedback that some of the concepts are still aspirational, still works in progress. We heard that, we heard that related to housing choice and affordability. I think you heard something similar from Mr. Berry earlier. Transportation connectivity and alternatives to driving, still something that the city is working on, and improved social connection. And then we also heard that there are maybe some updates or refreshes that are needed. Some of the language is a little bit dated or maybe overly technical and difficult for a layperson to understand or maybe just a little bit out of sync with where community priorities are today. We also heard that there should be a greater acknowledgement of the city's commitment to diversity and inclusion. And that goes beyond just cultural diversity and inclusion to include multi, multi-generational considerations, socioeconomic considerations, just kind of the broad spectrum of ways that people can, can exist in this world. And then this continued, this continued emphasis on environmental sustainability and climate responsiveness, we heard that a number of times. And the concept of resilience, both from a physical infrastructure standpoint and also this, the importance of the social fabric as people come together to support each other in types of crisis. And then finally, a need for gathering spaces, events, opportunities to really make those in-person connections for people. We heard that a lot, especially from youth and from seniors, but across the board, this is something that came up fairly frequently. I wanted to dive into the big picture findings just a little bit more. And you can follow along on pages five to seven of the report. So these were some of the topics that came up most frequently in the comments that we received. So an emphasis on community identity and character with some kind of branding, whether that's called an arts scene or a music scene or if it's related to environmental preservation and open spaces, some kind of brand that is both recognizable within Semamish and recognizable regionally as Semamish's identity. Wrapping diversity and inclusion into that, making sure that Semamish is known as a diverse and welcoming place for people of all walks of life and a place where it's really fun and easy to get together with friends and family and community. We also heard the importance of, of businesses and services. People like the idea of supporting small businesses that are in the city, a thriving local economy, having different commercial and services available for them just as a matter of convenience. You know, people don't necessarily like having to go down to Issaquah or to Bellevue and so having more businesses and more services and more amenities available in the city, preferably locally owned, so that Semamish people are supporting others to manage people. Infrastructure improvements and resilience got grouped together. You know, I think because of when engagement was occurring during the winter storm season, we heard a lot about reliability of utilities, especially electric utilities. We did hear about alternatives to Comcast, hopefully a community-owned internet service provider or really any service provider that's not Comcast. We heard, I see some, some smiles, maybe other people feel similarly to me or their neighbors. And then essential services like EMS, mental health services, all of those kinds of social services that really help make a community function. Transportation and housing, these really seem to be linked to people or in people's minds. So with, with additional development is potentially transportation-related impacts and how do you accommodate additional housing without seeing an increase in traffic? That was, that was a big one. So how can, how can different kinds of transportation infrastructure be more, more well-supported, whether that's walking or biking or transit or some other kind of transportation option? Continued importance of sustainability, that's, that's used very, very broadly by the community and intentionally broadly here as well. So we heard a lot of different aspects of sustainability as being important to the community. That includes some local action to address global climate issues. But that also includes things like green building to help manage the way that a building functions or serves its occupants. So something like a LEED certification, for example. And then green spaces, we've heard that people, people love their green spaces. They love their open spaces. They love their parks. They would love to see more of them and they would love to see them be easier to get to, to park at if they're driving more trails to, to more of these spaces so that they're more interconnected. And then interestingly, we also heard that there's a really good opportunity with these green spaces to incorporate some kind of interpretive signage or educational component that talks a little bit about the, the cultural history or the, the geologic history. We heard from the Semamish Botanical Garden Society that maybe there are some good opportunities for, for an educational, an educational botanical garden that is broader than the heritage garden that was recently installed. So this was, this was some really interesting feedback as well. The survey specifically, here, here are the findings from the survey. So we learned that the visioning process is timely in that it only somewhat, that was the term used in the survey, represents residents' views. So we know that there are some opportunities to bring the vision statement a little bit more in line with what current residents think and feel. We learned that residents really value safety, quiet and peace, great outdoor spaces, great schools and less traffic so that it's a lot easier to get around. We learned that with all of the development that's been happening in the region, that the impacts of growth are concerning and continue to be concerning, especially related to growing traffic. We also learned that walkability and housing affordability remain important and that connectivity, transportation connectivity and alternatives to driving are kind of second-tier priorities. So still important, but not quite as important as this focus on walkability and housing. So what this means for community visioning, we distilled all of the feedback that we got into six community value statements that I will go through now. So the first one is that Semamish is a community that prizes diversity and the richness it brings to the community. The city is inclusive, safe and welcoming and enables everyone to thrive. Semamish protects and enhances the natural environment as a hallmark of community character and an asset to the quality of life for residents and visitors alike. Semamish embraces a tight-knit character while providing access to retail restaurants, services and other amenities. Semamish values a range of housing types and choices that meet the needs of all of its residents. Semamish seeks to expand transportation connectivity for all modes of travel, including walking, biking, transit and other options aside from driving. And Semamish wants to be a resilient community with a strong social network and well-protected and well-maintained infrastructure. In our work, we also asked about planning priorities for the, the longer term. And we learned from both residents and non-residents. And there were some interesting areas of overlap that we'll talk about. Keeping in mind that the non-resident survey response was only about eighteen, with eighteen responses, it was exactly eighteen responses, whereas with the residents, you can see we had of all of the, all of the responses that we received, we had kind of varying levels of people who were participating in each question. But, but I included the breakdown of the response rates that we got here. So the resident priorities were improved infrastructure. Seventy-four percent of respondents rated that as a top priority. Environmental preservation, sixty-four percent of respondents rated that as a top priority. Then improved transportation and parks, recreation and open space planning came in very similarly at fifty-nine percent and fifty-seven percent for long-term prioritization. The non-resident survey had improved transportation as the top priority with eighty-five percent of those respondents ranking that as a top priority, followed by improved infrastructure at sixty-two percent. And then housing affordability and more small local businesses at fifty-four percent for those. And so we noted that there were some interesting, interesting overlaps in both the transportation and infrastructure prioritization here. I also noted that housing affordability came up because a lot of people felt like they would like to live in Semamish but just couldn't afford a home in the circumstances that they were in. So that was, housing affordability certainly seems to be a barrier for, for some people in joining this managed community. That brings us to our recommendation. So this is, this is pretty long and I'll talk a little bit about the structure. So there's So this is this is pretty long and I'll talk a little bit about the structure. So there's one bolded sentence at the top, the very beginning of the vision statement. And this is really intended, this this single sentence is really intended to serve as the high-level vision. This is the vision with subsequent sentences expanding a little bit on the concepts that are most important. But this gives you a single point, a single piece of guidance that you can use to evaluate any potential goal and policy. Does it does that goal or policy advance this specific statement? The supporting statements that come after help expand on on that statement a little bit in case there are maybe some areas in need of interpretation. But this statement here is the distillation of what we heard as the future that Samamish residents want. So in 2044, Samamish is a safe and inclusive community, abundant natural resources, quality schools and services and well-maintained infrastructure. The city is a vibrant, thriving community with a strong identity built around its diverse cultures, arts and events and bountiful green spaces. The city's neighborhoods are peaceful and welcoming to all, supporting robust social cohesion and engagement. Housing is available for a variety of incomes, ages and lifestyles. Samamish embraces its small-town character while providing access to locally-owned retail, restaurants and services that nurture the community's entrepreneurial spirit. The city's natural environment is well-preserved and interwoven into public and private spaces to enhance the quality of life for residents and visitors alike. Convenient access and connectivity between residential areas and destinations makes sidewalks, trails, bike lanes and transit viable alternatives to driving. Samamish is a resilient community with reliable utilities, sustainable city operations and a culture of mutual support. The next slides go through each of these one by one, so I'm just going to advance quickly through them. These are more to support discussion later on. Give me just a moment to get to my conclusion slide. Okay, so from here, before we get into Q and A, I just wanted to throw a quick plug in for the last of our visioning events. So on the fifteenth of March, we'll be visiting city council to review the revised report that incorporates the discussion points that I'm sure we will hear here tonight and recommended draft vision statement. And then we will present the the results of that meeting at a virtual open house that is open to the entire community on the thirty-first of March. So this will be the final version of the report and recommended draft vision statement. Project information does continue to be available online at connect.samamish.us/community-visioning. So with that, I will stop sharing my screen and we can open it up for some discussion.
Thanks, Christina. Let's see, let's let's just do questions first, particularly questions for Christina. So who has questions? Who would like to go first? Jerry, make sure you unmute yourself and go ahead.
Okay, I've got to learn how to electronically raise my hand. Sorry. Thank you, Christina, for your work. I'm curious, as as a newcomer, I wasn't around when you were commissioned to start this process. But I'm curious as to why the survey was only mailed out to such a small number of residents? And why you emailed so many homeowners associations and groups rather than contact them via mail or telephone to their representatives?
That's a great question. So a statistically valid survey doesn't need to be mailed to the entire community to have to have valid results. So statistical validity is the threshold at which you can be reasonably certain that the conclusions that you're drawing from the sample size accurately reflect the broader community. In this case, we don't need to mail to all sixty-five thousand households to be able to get that representation. We we mailed to just shy of five thousand. That was the the recommendation from our subconsultant RRC. They are this is what they do. They do community surveys, specifically statistically valid community surveys. So their recommendation was about just shy of of five thousand to get the response rate that we needed, which was I believe we were targeting around four hundred to four hundred and fifty responses for statistical validity. And as as you saw in the earlier slide about the survey, we had seven hundred and eighty-nine responses just to the statistically valid ones. So we can be sure that the conclusions that were drawn from that are representative of the community as a whole.
Okay, I think those numbers are quite small myself. And how could you consider the non-resident survey to be valid at all with only eighteen eighteen responses?
So the the non-resident survey is certainly not statistically valid, certainly not statistically valid. It is another data point to consider and it's an interesting comparison. Obviously, the the response pools being vastly different, it's not weighted the same. But it does tell us some interesting information about why people don't live in Samamish or what brings them to Samamish regularly. And these are people that maybe do want to be part of Samamish and there's some kind of barrier preventing them from being there. So it still provides some valuable information, even if it isn't statistically valid. And then just to address, sorry, to go back to the second part of your first question, which was why didn't we, why did we email instead of hard copy mail? You know, email was shown to be in we did an early poll that asked people how they preferred to be contacted, and most people preferred some sort of digital option, whether that was an email or an e-newsletter or social media, some some kind of digital outreach compared to an in-person or hard copy. I would also say that, you know, it's quite expensive to mail. And so budget being a concern, we wanted to make sure we were as efficient as possible with city resources.
Okay, thank you very much.
Sure.
Karen's got her hand up. Go ahead, Karen.
I'll lower my hand before I can talk. Thank you for the presentation. I thought it was quite thorough and and very informative. But my question is, how were the responses from the students in the schools? How were they accounted for in the final analysis?
Yes, so youth engagement was identified very early on as a key priority. We heard from a lot of students. I hope you had a chance to skim through the appendix. We got a lot of really amazing artwork. Some of it is quite large and I think is in city hall, and I hope that we have an opportunity to display it all. I know the students worked really hard on that. We also had some great conversations in classrooms. We did some virtual stuff, we did some in-person stuff. And it was, it was really wonderful, I will say, to engage with students in Samamish. It was very refreshing to hear some unique perspectives and, you know, we did we did, because youth engagement was a priority, we did incorporate their feedback into the vision statement. And I can can tell you a little bit about that. So the emphasis on community gathering was huge for youth. They want places where they can go to spend time with their friends and they want that to be as affordable as possible. So if that's a low-cost option, or if that's even better, a free option, that was something that we heard that was really, really critical for them. We also heard, let's see, this is where we got a lot of feedback about additional retail options. The quote that we heard from, I think it was, I think it was Eastlake High School. One of the students said, you you can only eat once, but you can shop all day. Which I I loved because, you know, they want to be out and about and spending their time in in these different commercial spaces, hanging out with their friends. Maybe it's just window shopping. Maybe it's picking up, you know, whatever, like fashion, or maybe it is grabbing a bite to eat. But but this emphasis and and also specifically on local businesses, locally-owned businesses. This is also where we heard the term mom and pop. I I think somebody had a question about that that was sent via email. But youth had a lot to say about wanting additional places to to gather, to shop. They saw a lot of great value in having shopping available because it's an indoor space to hang out with friends. Right now, a lot of stuff is available outdoors in parks or whatever, but not not as much indoors. And they are really keyed in to this idea of small local businesses. It was really amazing. It was one of my favorite discussions with them. So those are just a couple of examples of how we incorporated their their feedback. But that was something that we very purposefully woven into the vision statement since the youth will be the ones who are inheriting this in the timeline that the plan is planning for.
Are you taking suggestions about polishing up or adding to the vision statement at this point? Is that part of what we're doing here tonight?
Yes, we're taking, I mean, this is the unveiling of the draft, but it is very much a draft and we are hoping to get your specific feedback. I definitely look forward to incorporating your recommendations and suggestions and requests in into a a version that we can all collectively stand behind as it gets presented to city council, definitely.
Well, then I would suggest that there be specific references to the youth input there. I I see, you know, statements about retail and so forth, places to gather. But it doesn't really reflect that it's for youth. And I think that Samamish could be a fabulous little small-town, you know, family-friendly, but also adolescent-friendly place for kids who don't drive yet, for kids who need a place to gather. Yeah, I mean, they see their friends at school, but, you know, to relax and really have fun and take friendships a little further. And I think this is an opportunity for Samamish to to actually work towards that goal of making a place for kids. Because God knows, you're probably not old enough to have children who are adolescents or teenagers. But it is tough, you know? It is very tough for kids to find places to express themselves and be with each other. So I would suggest that we make specific references to youth-friendly retail, youth-friendly, not so much events, but attractions. Like, you know, one one of the kids at the high school was talking about an arcade, something like that, that's a bowling alley or, you know, things like that. So I think it's important that we use some words that are specific to youth. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mike, how about you next?
Thanks. Yeah, I'll have maybe a couple of specific comments about the vision statement itself out later, but I'd like to stay at a little bit higher level for a few moments. And so since this is a vision that is out, you know, a couple of decades, actually, my question is about the process. And I understand the survey and the the gathering of community input and how important that is, that that's really critical, that we're, you know, really reflecting what the residents want. But because of the long-term nature, I am wondering how, you know, trends and demographics and technology, you know, these kind of visions that people might have about what what we could be that generally maybe residents wouldn't think about in responding to, say, a survey. So basically, the question is about factoring in other types of input besides the voice of the residents at this point in time.
So we we really grounded our process in community engagement. As as planners who are working in the public realm, we do have a professional responsibility to try and imagine what things look like. You know, we spend time thinking about what are the impacts of autonomous vehicles or drone deliveries or or those kinds of things. But ultimately, the vision statement should be high enough level that it's more about the spirit of the community and less about the specifics of how certain kinds of technology get implemented. If there's something specific that you'd like to see us more thoroughly address, I would be very happy to take a look at that. But I, this was intended to be high enough level that we wouldn't that we wouldn't necessarily need to to focus on certain technological advances, just because those can be really difficult to predict.
No, I totally understand that. So to build on that and to elaborate perhaps a little bit and just take traffic as an example. And you mentioned about drones and, you know, autonomous field, you know, there's changes that are going on in the transportation system that may mitigate some of the traffic challenges that we have right now. But when people are answering and they say, and as an example, I don't want to see development because traffic is crazy. You know, that's based on what we know and understand today and not what the future might hold. So that's why I was asking if there's some consideration for, you know, there are things that are changing that we can only imagine. And Christina, you kind of answered that in terms of, you know, these are higher-level vision statements. But just, I guess, a caution in terms of drawing conclusions that says we should limit growth as an example, and it could be other things as well because of what our current mindset is, if that makes if that makes some sense.
It does. I think I understand your your questions and comments maybe a little bit better. So yes, we do, we do incorporate some some professional judgment and interpretation in looking at the results. Some some of you who sent in email comments picked up on some things that maybe it weren't super clearly reflected in the survey results, but still show up in the vision statement. And that's where that's where you start to see some of that professional professional interpretation of of what we're seeing and how how the responses maybe could translate. So your point about development and traffic is a great one. What happens when there are better non-motorized options and people can get around more effectively without driving? And so that's that's where you see transportation alternatives remaining a priority is because that's a great way to defer some of the challenges that we've heard from people. And it's it is supported by the engagement that we've done, but it's that's maybe not like exactly clear from the the specific survey response breakdown. And and so that's kind of how how the vision evolves from the survey to what we have presented.
Christina, that's super helpful. Hey, I have, since I have the floor, I'm going to ask real brief. So you had resident profiles, non-resident profiles, it's a list of priorities. First, and I'm focused on the resident one, improved infrastructure, environmental preservation, improved transportation, parks, recreation, open space. The improved infrastructure, improved transportation, those could be viewed as one and the same. So was it clear the difference between infrastructure and transportation? And was it clear the difference between environmental preservation and parks, recreation and open space planning? They're very, they're very close.
They are, they are. And you can see how interrelated some of these concepts are for people and how these are, these continue to be so important. So the short answer is kind of, I mean, I can't say how each person specifically interpreted the terminology. We thought we were pretty clear that, you know, transportation was really about mode alternatives. So can you get around by walking? Can you get around by transit? Can you get to the light rail station? Like, can you get around in some kind of way? Whereas the infrastructure side of things is more about how are your roads being maintained? Do do sidewalks exist? Do you have reliable internet? Do you have reliable electricity? So those are, those are where we, I mean, we we think that we were clear in how we were presenting those those options. And then similar with the environmental preservation versus so permanently protecting. And then similar with the environmental preservation versus so permanently protecting, um, in a, in a natural state, different pieces of open space versus the development of parks that are, um, programmed, whether informally or more formally with specific structures and activities.
Okay. That, thanks for the elaboration.
Sorry, Miriam, go ahead.
Sorry. I just wanted to jump in, Mike, on your first question. Um, so I wanted to say that even though we're directed to look to the community and get community input for the community vision, we are going to be doing a lot of analysis when we get to the comp plan and looking at those various elements that we'll be updating. So there'll be a lot of data analysis in that portion, as well as a lot more community engagement on the specific topics too. So I wanted to be sure to mention that. And I do think in this survey, we did define infrastructure.
We did.
For folks, because we know that that's a very technical term. So I just wanted to add that as well.
Thank you.
TC, go ahead.
Thank, thank you, Chair Baughman. I guess one of the things that I kind of struggle with here is trying to understand the actual real world implication of this exercise. Is, is our goal simply to create a statement that meets and addresses as many of the potential concerns of community and non-community members as possible? Or are we actually really trying to drive a workable vision for what the next 20 years of Samamish holds? Right? Because on one hand, you've got, you know, uh, the youth and they want great places to hang out. They want laser tag and bowling alleys and shopping malls. And then on the other hand, you have not the youth and they want, uh, you know, green spaces and continued tree canopy coverage. So does that mean that we are going to build a bowling alley with a rooftop garden? In order to try and make everybody happy? And, and, and I, I know that I'm really, really taking this to an extreme, right? I'm, I'm, I'm grabbing two very, very far examples, right? And, but I'm doing it purposely because I'm, I'm trying to really understand what it is that we're going after here.
Yeah. So, um, the vision statement can be thought of as setting the trajectory, right? This is, this is the, the statement that you use to measure each goal and policy in the comprehensive plan. Those goals and policies then inform implementation actions and decisions that are made by, um, by city leadership, whether that is department directors or city council. Anybody who is making a decision should be making a decision that furthers the vision statement. Or, uh, at least doesn't like is, is vision neutral, doesn't step away from the vision statement, right? So, um, you know, realistically speaking, the, the vision, it's very aspirational. It's intended to be very aspirational. It's intended, uh, very specifically to, to inspire, right? And at the same time, you know, it does need to be grounded in community priorities and community values. So that as implementation actions occur, it's consistent with what the community wants. And so if you do have competing priorities, that's one of the reasons why, uh, we've suggested changing the structure a little bit so that you have this single key statement that is short, sweet, to the point, that says, this is what we're doing. And then everything else is a little bit more explanatory, a little bit more, um, more of the inspirational side of things. And so you have just this one statement where you can weigh, you know, what is truly the most important of these two fairly important goals. And maybe it does mean that you build a bowling alley with a rooftop garden on it, which I think sounds pretty cool. And actually does fit a, it does fit a lot of the different, um, pieces of feedback that we heard from people, uh, with the, and an emphasis on green space and cool places to hang out and sustainability. But I, I, I mean, the, the purpose is to, uh, both to set the stage for where you're going and also to inspire people to want to get there.
Thank you very much for that. So I guess I would follow that on with, how has this process of collecting feedback and driving a vision statement differed from previous iterations of doing the same exercise? And how have we measured up compared to previous vision statements and what we've actually delivered as a community?
So, um, I can't speak to the specifics of how your previous vision statement was developed, but I see David has turned on his camera. And so I'm hoping that means he can shed some light on the 2015 vision statement process.
So the past vision statement processes, none of the staff that are here, uh, have participated in those. So I can't speak to it from experience, but I can say that there were, uh, you know, a few breadcrumbs left for us to pick up a trail. I, I know that the city council was involved in drafting of the vision statement at a retreat. Um, and that there, the, the amount of public inputs on that vision statement was somewhat limited. Meaning that it did not include an extensive, um, survey and analysis around, um, community objectives prior to the drafting of that vision statement. We are doing something here, we, 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 we take this very seriously. We want to really understand what the community interest is. And like, like you said, Doc, Commissioner Labby, um, it's very, it's very difficult because there are disparate interests at play. And trying to pull all that information into a very succinct cohesive paragraph as a vision statement is inherently challenging. I myself sat through in, in, in your, in your seat in a different city as a planning commissioner, leading up to our comp plan, trying to write a vision statement, very challenging. Fortunately, we, we had really good city staff counterparts that did a, a survey like what we're doing now. So I'm drawing off of that experience here in trying to get to a solid bounded vision statement that we feel is supported by the broader community interest. So I, I can't compare it to what was done in the past because I had not participated in that. And the, the information that we have as to how that vision statement was created in terms of records is, is not necessarily helpful to us. But we have learned from that also, and we are leaving very deliberate records. And we are making sure so that somebody can trace this backwards to this initial source, which is this survey that we did and this report that was done on the gap analysis between the past vision statement and what you're looking at now in terms of recommendations going forward.
Thank you. I, I appreciate that both from you, David, and, and you, Christina. And, and I want you guys to know that I'm not trying to, uh, not trying to be purposely dismissive of, of any of the work that's gone into this. It was, my, my example was merely to try and drive, uh, a, a very specific point, right? Which is if we're trying to develop an inclusive, in inclusivity statement wherein we encapsulate as many of the concepts a- as we would love to see, that, that's one goal versus actually driving a goal towards what the community is going to become. I, I think that those are, are, are different and, and need to be addressed, right? Because we could, we could go off and, and develop a separate inclusivity statement, right? And, and I think that that would potentially be valuable as well. But, uh, anyways, that's what I had.
One, one suggestion is that, um, in, in writing a vision statement, you could also try to, you know, in, in, in working through it, we're not necess- you know, I'm not saying that you need to rewrite it. I'm, what I'm saying is that if you choose to change it, rewrite it, whatever you want to do with it, that you could also create some sort of, some framework goals as objectives that go along with it, that you could then pass off to staff that we could use as benchmarks or touchstones when we're working on our comprehensive plan update. Because I feel like there's no way you're ever going to ca- encapsulate everything that we learned through this exercise in the vision statement. But what you can do is you can help us by giving us a nudge in the right direction when we start out on the comp plan update of, by saying, you know, we, we think this is a vision that gets where we really want to go. But we also think these framework goals are really important for you to keep in mind when you're working through the different disciplinary sections of the comp plan. And when you come back to us as a, as a commission with the comp plan update, we want to know how you've addressed these, these framework goals, um, in doing your work. That, that's another way to go about this where you don't have to feel so boxed in by, we only have this one paragraph. But you know, there, there's a lot more going on here, um, and we recognize that.
So I want to, I want to give Josh a chance to comment, but I just want to, because you made that statement, David, I want to just add that. And one of my comments was, as I read through this statement, I think it's really valuable for, um, you know, staff and really everybody to think about for each piece and part, as you take it apart in your mind, would the average person be able to envision how that piece of a vision statement could or might translate into something real? Some of it feels pretty hard to, it's, it, it is so high level. It's hard for the average person to envision how that translates into something that we might actually do in the future. And other parts, you can, and, and they might not all agree, but people could envision how that might translate into something practical, whether that's they, we love green spaces, oh, that means more parks, something like that, right? But there are other statements in there that are so, um, so far removed that it becomes difficult to use. So if part of the purpose of this is to translate eventually into an update of the comp plan, I think the first step of being able to imagine how we might take that step towards a real action item, that's a good way to evaluate what's in the vision statement. Josh, go ahead.
Uh, thank you. So I'm viewing the vision statement as in many ways a policy document. It's setting the foundation for what we're going to be doing a lot of work in here soon. And so I'm looking to have something that's actually actionable. 20 years seems like a long time, but it's not that long. Consider the Urban Forest Management Plan, how long it was in planning stage. And now we've got even a couple more years before we really see anything, uh, coming from that. So 20 years with a vision statement like this isn't that long. So I just want that to be part of the consideration. The, I, and I emailed some of this in, but I've got some issues with some of the, um, assumptions or assertions made from the data points. Just to throw this out here, for example, it says that, um, on page 63, residents are split on the need to improve access to retail and restaurants. And on page 21, it says, there is strong support for a thriving local economy of small mom and pop businesses. Those are two diametrically opposed statements and they're in the same document deciding our vision. So it just, and there's many like that. And I sent a few examples in there and I just kind of stopped pulling them out. But it doesn't match what, um, was in the statistically valid survey, which I believe should really be the driver of, um, I'm going to get to a question, this kind of sets it up, really should be the driver of what this turns into. And I wish I would have caught this, you know, months or weeks ago, but the listening sessions that were had with interest groups and people in the community should have really informed the statistically valid survey. That way we're not taking the survey and then trying to pigeonhole random comments from a bunch of community groups that, you know, have different interests. So I guess my question is, my, what I would really like to see is where the vision, take apart the vision statement that we have now and cite where that portion of the vision statement is backed up by the data. Specifically the statistics in the valid survey, but then the anecdotes that were collected. Cause anecdotes are valuable in my view, but they shouldn't drive the discussion. They should help color in the lines from what we learned from the community at large, rather than rewrite what we learned from the community from a valid survey. So that's i- in my, so that's one question is can, can we do that so we can get a better idea and really track down where this vision statement came from? And the other question I have is, is it possible to get the cross tabs from the, uh, survey just to go through? Um, and that's, that's it for now. I'm going to go through this with a lot more detail. And I don't want to be overly negative because the city, the staff did put out a lot of communications to the public. I know a lot of people were aware of the, the survey and the visioning process. And, um, this document is really in-depth and well-written and it was frankly easy to read, but I just have some issues that, you know, just went over. So that's, yeah, that's it.
Okay. Uh, so let me, let me take your second question first. So yes, the city does have the, um, the cross tab information, uh, so that, that's available. Um, and then to get to the first part of your question, um, how, as, let me paraphrase, I, I guess by saying, how, how was the, the survey, um, balanced with some of the input that we received elsewhere? Or maybe why was it balanced the way that, that it is? Um, and this, this gets a little bit to, um, some of what I, I shared, uh, in response to Mike's question earlier, uh, which is that in reviewing some of the survey results, we take a professional planning lens to be able to interpret those results. Uh, and so residents may be split on some issues, but understanding the perspective that they come from through the conversations that we have outside of the specific responses in the survey are what helps us to get from those specific survey results to the information that we included in the vision statement. You know, this, this may be a split that is driven by traffic or parking, for example. And so while people support the concept of more businesses being available, they don't support the concept of some of the challenges that maybe are perceived to come with that. We're also incorporating the feedback that we got from these historically underrepresented and underserved groups like youth, um, and like seniors, where we were really purposeful in that because that was a clearly stated priority going into this project. That was one of the driving holes. But if you do want to see where each of the statements is founded, both in the survey results and in all of the other engagement work that we did, uh, that is absolutely something that we can provide.
Yeah. And I guess like one of my concerns with the interpretation of the information is, quote, the residents strongly desire community-owned internet. I didn't see many mentions of that, but if that ends up in our vision statement and then in our comp plan, that's a tens of millions of dollar bill we just handed our city, right? So it's, you know, it's important that we don't, you know, interpret what people say too much because this is real policy implications going forward.
Absolutely. And you'll note that community-owned internet is not specifically in the recommended vision statement.
No, but utilities are.
Utilities are.
Labby utilities and that community-owned internet was like under that section where it was reinforcing the statement for that section, right? So if someone goes back and looks at the supporting documentation, the analysis says that that's part of it. Or at least that's the way I read it and I could very well be wrong, but.
It's, it's a good point that that is, um, that that is how the, the report could be construed. And I'll, I'll take a look at how that's worded. But let me, I did go through the open-ended responses after we received, uh, your email. And I will say that there are, um, in the open-ended responses, um, keeping in mind that these aren't, not everybody provided an open-ended response to everything, question. But there were 31 distinct mentions of internet or wifi as a desirable, um, desirable utility, just in the survey responses themselves, uh, let alone the conversations that we had, um, with, with community members in our other engagement efforts. So it is something that we did hear, uh, fairly, fairly often throughout our engagement process.
So I, I, yeah, I saw that in, in there as well, and I've heard that plenty from residents, but I'm taking issue with the specific, specific language, language, community-owned, which is entirely separate from better internet options, which I think would get like a hundred percent support from the community.
Okay. Duly noted. Thank you.
David, did you want to, I see your hand up. Did you want to say something?
Yeah, I just wanted to add on that, you know, some, some of the things that we see when we go through these, we, we look at from the staff level and we look at how they ultimately add up to something that is a betterment of the We, we look at from the staff level and we look at how they ultimately add up to something that is a betterment of the community. So. In, in terms of, um, and, and I'll, I'll use the, the term that you used, um, Commissioner Amato, the, uh, the, you know, community. Better internet options, right? Though we, we, we think of it in the terms of the so that, right? We need better internet options so that more people can work from home. And so that we have more options for remote schooling or. In, in, in a public health emergency, we're able to actually go about our business and we've seen a lot of that lately. Um, so, or, or, or so that our, our traffic congestion is somewhat. Addressed, right? So. If we can improve internet options for reliability, for speed, um, connectivity in general. Then we can get people to work from home to get people off the roads and out of their cars. Um, so those are the sort of the, some of the things that we look at in terms of relationships when we're writing a vision statement. Because that is one of the, the ways we see the best ways we can work towards. Addressing some of our, our issues in the city like traffic is we have to trace it back to what is. What are the things we need to do to start to change? How we operate as a community in order to improve our, our quality of life and our situation that we're in.
Okay, um, Christine, I have a couple of questions. Actually, I have a couple of them that are kind of interrelated, so maybe I'll just ask them together. Is, is the, is the length of this vision statement? Appropriate? And I asked that also in the context of. What do other communities have for vision statements and how does this compare? Maybe not in the context and the specifics, because not every community should be somewhat different. But just in terms of the way it's developed, the length of the statement, that sort of thing. How does it compare?
I am glad that you asked that because I spent some time looking at some neighboring cities. Um, and everyone takes a little bit different approach. Bothl, for example, has a summary statement that says. At the end of our planning horizon, our community is this, and then has like nineteen or so. Individually lettered. Statements that follow. There's this longer than yours from a specific word count perspective, both the, the current two thousand fifteen vision statement and this one, which is. Um, actually just one sentence longer, I think one sentence longer, a little longer anyway. But by and large, most, most of the cities, uh, that I have worked in or researched as. Um, as part of this project or other projects that I've worked on have a, especially in this region, have a very similar approach to writing. To writing a vision statement in that it's, um, you know, it's a little bit lengthier. People want to capture as much as they can of the community vision. I do agree that it can. It can definitely seem very long, uh, which is why I have, um. I have included the recommendation to have that single guiding statement at the beginning that is then supported by. The, the subsequent statements that. Gives you the single, the single distilled point that is your, your metric and then. More information about what some of that might mean, uh, in, in context with community priorities. So, um. I haven't really seen other jurisdictions taking that particular approach. It's something that, that I'm, I was really excited to, to suggest. Uh, and I think it makes the whole statement a little bit easier to. To manage as you're trying to weigh out how well your goals and priorities and decisions are matching up with that statement. So.
I, I would say, yeah, I would say that I think, you know, the first version of it that was in the packet that we got was just sort of one. Run-on. Block of text and that made it seem. More daunting than when it's organized a little bit differently, like you did in your presentation. So I think that that could be a, a way to make it more, um, accessible. The, another question I have, which, um, you may think is completely diametrically opposed to the last one that I just asked is. How do you, uh, how did you decide? Sort of, uh, what made it into the vision statement and what didn't? And here's the reason I ask that. I'm not necessarily advocating for this. I'm just going to use it as an example. In some of the backup that I read and also even in your presentation, there was a number of references to. Like climate change, sustainability, things that were very environmentally related. And yet the vision statement doesn't really seem to address that. It says green spaces, um, it says. Resiliency, but it doesn't really seem to respond to that particular specific topic. And I realize that you got to distill it down somehow, but I'm curious. How did you decide in that case or in some of the other, I, there's a few other examples too. What made it in and what didn't or, and, and I'll just say that. I think it's seems to me that it's tempting to just use. Whatever the word of the day is in, in our, you know, kind of cultural lexicon to make it seem like it's a relevant statement. But on the other hand, we should probably make sure that we're actually including things that twenty years from now will seem. Relevant to what we did over that course of time, not just the buzzword of the day. So. How did you kind of go through the process of deciding that and filtering and, and putting in here some things and some things didn't really make the cut?
I've just, I, let me say that I'm really impressed with all of the questions that you're all asking, um, and I, I am. Really enjoying this conversation. So, uh, one of the key. Takeaways that we got from, from the survey results, but also throughout our other engagement efforts was that the, the bones of the existing vision statement were pretty good. Uh, still pretty relevant, still, uh, pretty consistent by and large with community priorities. And so that's where we started. We, we also took some of the, the critiques of the current vision statement and looked at some ways to. To polish. The, the existing vision statement, whether that is taking out some things, replacing some words, adding some new concepts in. So we wanted, we wanted to start with what. What the community really identified with from the, the, the existing. Vision statement and then start to fold in the concepts that we heard most frequently. Uh, you're right that not everything can fit into the vision statement. Uh, it's, it's already. Pretty, pretty long. Uh, I mean, it's definitely not the longest one that I've seen. I've seen some that are like a page and a half just of the. The vision statement. Um, and that just makes it really impossible to figure out like what, uh, how do you like how to work with that? But. You know, it, we, we tried to focus on the things that we heard most frequently as key priorities. Most consistently across the different groups that we engaged with. Uh, we relied a lot on the key findings from the survey and then tried to do our best to balance that, uh, really intentionally with what we heard from the. Especially the underrepresented and underserved groups that we were able to speak with.
Okay, um, go around again and, um, people have more questions? Mike?
Yeah, well, I'll jump in. I'll shift a little bit to more comments, I think. First off, Christina, your, your answers have been great too. So you. Talked about us asking good questions and you've been hanging, hanging in there and giving great, great responses. So I'm looking at the, the, um, there were the, I think it was called the value statements. And. There are a few phrasings in there that I thought were, you know, maybe could be fine-tuned a little bit. And then, then to the vision statement. And so first the question and then, then a couple of specific comments. How are those value statements used? Would they be part of like what the overall vision statement is or, or separate or? Or are they just pieces to build into the vision statement?
Uh, so. I think of them as the summary, the highest level summary of, of what we heard. So these are the values. Uh, in which the vision statement is grounded.
Okay. So then there are a few phrases like Samamish prizes diversity. Which is. Uh, I, I think I understand why you would say that versus Samamish wishes to foster or build diversity or something like that, right? So that's, that's because there's summary statements and not necessarily. That future-looking kind of a statement. Is that a, a reasonable interpretation?
Yes, I think so.
So then on the vision statement, I actually, having gone through this stuff kind of a little bit. Carefully like reading the, the buildup and the, uh, survey responses and so forth. I actually, you know, despite talking about it being a little bit long, as these things go, it seems pretty reasonable. I really like the statement in bold. I have one little quibble about that. Uh, which is well-maintained. If I, if I read that very specifically, I could say, well, the infrastructure is not adequate, but it's maintained nicely, you know? So, so there might be some fine tuning to that wording that it's, you know, effective or efficient or, you know. Something that it's, it meets the needs, not just that it's well-maintained. And, but then other than that, I could parse each of the sentences that follow and said, you know, I could see the city, uh, being. A great place to live. If each of those, those statements were in fact. Realized in another, you know, ten, fifteen, twenty years. So I think it's overall really pretty good. I would suggest that, you know, some of the comments that we've made and, you know, those sorts of things as you take back and, and look at it. And obviously I'm sure there's other commissioners that will have some more specific comments that. Um, I'm sure there's a little bit more fine tuning, but from, from my. Perspective, it, it captures a lot of what, you know, I think we're hearing people would like Samamish to be in another couple decades. So. Think that's a good job.
Thank you.
All right, who else? Carrie Lee, you look like you're chomping at the bit to say something. Make sure you.
Found the raise hand button. There you go. Thank you. Sorry to be slow. Um, this is a question for you, Mike. Mark, excuse me, what is the, uh, what's the process going to be for us as commissioners to? Provide the feedback for this document?
Sure, there's lots of avenues, I think, and I, you know, Evan may jump in here or David, but lots of avenues to provide feedback. Um, I would say e- email is pretty practical because. You can go, you can get a lot of specifics in there and. If you don't want to be on, on the, on the Zoom meeting for an hour and a half talking, then you can certainly type stuff up and that's probably pretty efficient. Um, but you know, comments here, we'll probably, I think if I remember the process, we'll see it again. The city council will see it again. So there's lots of opportunity of face, to do face-to-face input, but I do recommend, um, and I always recommend to anybody to take the time to provide some. Email feedback because that does get. A pretty detailed review and usually results in, in changes and so forth. So I, Miriam, maybe you were going to add something to that.
But, uh, on that, would, would that email be to? From us just to the commission or would we include David and, you know, who would we send it to so that everybody gives the feedback? What's that process?
That sounds like a question for you, Miriam.
I'll take it. Um, so I would recommend if you are comfortable emailing Amber, who's your liaison. Um, and you can see, see your chair and co-chair if you like, or the whole planning commission. I would just remind you. Um, as a planning commission, that if you were to respond to that email, it's considered a quorum. So. Keep that in mind as you're sending things, but, um, if you send them to Amber, she can go ahead and forward it to our project team who will take it into consideration. I just wanted to clarify. So this is our only meeting with planning commission. Um, and then we're going to city council in March, but you, we will be bringing this back. So city council in March will review. The draft division statement, just as you all are now. And then we're not asking them to make any motions on it or adopt it at this time. We'll be looking at it again. When we go to the comprehensive plan update and start scoping for the comprehensive plan update. And at that time. They'll re-review it and see if it still feels valid and if there's any other changes that are made. And at that point, we'll be asking them to adopt it. So there's lots of time for feedback, I guess is what I'm saying.
Thank you. Other, uh, comments or questions?
Go ahead, Josh. Um, of these other community groups that were reached out to, I was looking real quick and I couldn't find it, but doesn't mean it's not in here, but is there a? Number of people, uh, noted for each one of these events, whether it was the business forum or the Samamish seniors or. What have you that you reached out to and, and kind of. Resulted in some language that was used?
Sorry, I muted myself. Uh, there's, there is not a specific count of people at each of those events. Uh, we, uh, ended up doing some work to, um, anonymize the feedback a little bit more. Um, and so that's no longer.
So we don't have. Quantity like there was X number of people at this forum?
Right.
Okay, so there's a chance that ten people could be having an outsized impact on Samamish for twenty years?
I do think. Christina, maybe we can talk. When we meet next, because I do think we have numbers for most of those. So we could add. Just the number of total participants that were there.
Sure.
At least for like the events like popcorn with planning and the senior and the business one, I think that would be easy to add.
Okay.
Yeah, and I'm happy to go back to the invitation that we sent to the communities and see how many people attended.
I, I will tell you, Josh, I think I participated in one of those, so I might be having an outsized influence over Samamish for twenty years. That might be depressing for you.
I, I have a quick question.
Yeah, go ahead, TC.
Uh, so I'm looking at page thirty-seven of the packet, which is labeled appendix B stakeholder engagement summary. And I see things, or I see homeowner associations, property managers, summary, sharing information only, no feedback collected. And then religious organizations, no feedback collected. Is that because no feedback was provided from any of those organizations that we reached out to? Or we reached out with an information only and there was no mechanism for them to actually respond?
We reached out with information, asking them to respond through the channels that we had already established. So that would be through. The survey and through the project website. So, um, it was a unidirectional effort for a number of our, a number of our. Uh, our reach efforts listed there.
So I guess. I'm, I'm just going off the homeowners associations, reached out to a hundred and four, or no, four hundred and one associations and four property managers, collected zero feedback. Where is the statistical relevance from? Any of those people?
So we, we specifically requested that information be shared, uh, with all of, all of our. Events and that includes the survey, that includes opportunities to meet with us at popcorn with planning, at the virtual town hall. To provide comments via the, the comment form online. So that was, um, our intention was to drive traffic through. Those methods that were already established. Um, so these, these email touches were to make sure people were aware of the project. Aware of opportunities to engage with the project. Certainly if they wanted to. Email us, which some, some did to ask for some clarification, they were welcome to do that. Um, they, we receive phone calls. To follow up, but we weren't specifically soliciting responses to that specific email touch.
Can I also just? Add to that. So our goal with a lot of those, the HOAs, especially knowing how many homeowner associations there are within the city of Samamish. The property management companies, the religious institutions was really more a way to reach the broader resident community. Um, and so we were asking them to help disseminate information. To the people within those groups rather than get their specific feedback, although they were welcome to do that as well.
David, your hand is up. Were you going to add something?
Yeah, I just wanted to raise that, you know, we, we do regularly reach out to homeowners associations and receive no response. So it is not uncommon. Um, when we were going through our, our really fun wireless code update that we part in. We did set up a meeting to talk about, uh, how the wireless. Code and the placement of small cell might affect homeowners associations. And I think only five homeowners associations, uh, showed up and we. You know, had reached out to them and really didn't hear back from any of them. Um, so it is pretty common. That's all, it was also common that the contact information changes. We have a hard time keeping up with and maintaining contact lists for homeowners associations. Um, so it, it is challenging for us on our end. Just want to, uh, point that out. And, you know, we, we're, we're doing our best here to try to. Come up with valid information for you to use and base your, um. Work in, in, on the vision on, um. I, I do recall that when I was in your position as a planning commissioner that I, that I actually. we actually were required to attend the meetings with the staff. And I think we held 45 community meetings in the city of Shoreline in 2008. And I had to attend, I think, 15 of those meetings as a planning commissioner. The point there was to validate the information that we were receiving, that the staff was receiving. So we're, we're hopeful that, you know, we'll, we'll focus on what we learned. I know that there is a lot of concern and question about how we got the information, but really we're hoping to switch gears here and start to focus on what we learned from the survey as opposed to the validity of the survey work itself.
Any other questions or comments? I, I have just a couple. I, I first I'd say, I do think that when I first read the, the vision statement, I thought, oh, this is like every buzzword in the book and this is quite a bit of stuff. But the more I looked at the backup behind it, I think I would just encourage that you make sure to kind of push people to look beyond just the, the paragraph or the bullet points and look at where the information came from. Because that makes it, the context of that actually adds a lot to why it is the way it is and what it says. One very specific thing, I'm being a little bit random here, but one very specific thing, I would just suggest considering how a lot of people said, or the, the term housing affordability showed up frequently. And I think my perception, having, having been around this for a bit, is that people in Samamish tend to use housing affordability and housing, diversity of housing type kind of in the same vein. And so there may be a little translation that's necessary. And also, just in terms of looking out for our own selves, it's, it's going to be possible to continue to work on housing diversity within the community. I think it's going to continue to be very difficult for this commission, the city staff, the council, everybody to make progress on housing affordability. So I think it's just important to keep that in context of what people are actually saying when they use some of those words and what we can do with it going forward. And maybe make, make sure that what we're saying and presenting reflects that. And, and I would add on to that, as I said before, to the extent that we can craft the language, and you've pretty well done it here, but you know, maybe there's going to be a few tweaks. To the extent that we can craft the language in a way that's forward looking towards, and I hate this word, but actionable things that we can actually do something with, that would be super helpful, right? Because we, if we write a vision statement, and this isn't, this one isn't that way. But if we write a vision statement that then doesn't, doesn't lead us to being able to really do anything with it, then it's been a complete waste of time. But if we write a vision statement that then leads us to come up with a list of actions that we can take or plans that we can create to then take actions, which is what the comp plan is, then that's a super valuable document. So I think this has a mix of some of those things. I would just encourage, if you do any editing, keep that in view. Are we creating something that we can turn around tomorrow and develop a plan and create an action list? If that's the case, if you answer yes, great, awesome, that's what exactly we need. If it's hard to sit around and think up what that translates into in terms of a plan and an action, that may not be very helpful. That might just be words that feel good, but don't actually help us very much. So I just encourage that, keep that in view if there's any editing that goes on here. Otherwise, I mean, I think it's great, you know, it's, it's an incremental change from our last vision statement. It adds more to what the community is now and perhaps people want it to be in the future. And as long as internet connectivity does not lead to a whole nother round of discussion about wireless code, then I'm in full support. Thank you for the work, Christina. All right, anybody else have any more comments or questions? I don't see anything. All right. Thanks, everyone, for the discussion. And look forward to see what the council has to say. Okay. Let's move on to the next thing on our agenda, which is agenda related public comments. I'm certain we have some.
We do have an attendee, if you would like to give comment, can you please raise your hand? Okay, he has, Mr. Stickney, I'm unmuting you now. All right, you are unmuted.
Hello, planning commissioners, Paul Stickney, Samamish. Good conversations tonight. Impressed with a lot of the topics. Agree with making a vision statement that is actionable. Would suggest that you do take a look at last week's city council meeting on the growth targets and the comments that have come in about that. This leads part and parcel on one side of a vision for the community. But today I'll just stay on the vision. Lots of work went into this. I attended many of the, well, I heard all of the city commission discussions when the vision was brought up with parks, human services, arts, was on the senior call, heard that as well, went to the library the day that that happened. So have quite a lot of background. And also attended the 27th of January popcorn with planning unveiling of these results before this comprehensive package was put into your packet. Honestly, I didn't expect to see as much as there, there's a lot there to unpack. I'm only part of the way through it, but I have studied the summary, et cetera, which I'm going to speak to here in just a second. There were roughly, and this is anecdotal because I didn't precisely count, but I would say there were roughly 15 members from the public on the 27th and four or five staff. That's my recollection. Getting into a few specifics, I would suggest that in the single summary statement, that three words be added, optimized housing supplies get added to that sentence. And I would also suggest that in the vision context or the words that expand on the summary ideals, consider some language along these lines. Come for the natural beauty with adequate classy housing options to stay for life. And a second statement, the city cherishes holistic enrichments having modestly alleviated local housing imbalances. A strong vision language, and I agree with many of you on this, is essential. But I believe it's essential to, to address the primary ailment in Samamish, which is to remedy over four decades of housing misdevelopment relative to cycle of life housing demands as contrasted with existing local housing supplies within our community. At the popcorn for planning meeting on, on the 27th, I got to ask if the survey question actually asked folks in Samamish, would you like to see a housing mix that could allow you and or others to stay in the community for planned and unplanned changes over life? That question was not asked. And as a residential community, I believed we have a heightened duty and responsibility to find out if that's what our residents want. My next statement I'm going to say is 80 to 90% factual and 10 or 20% anecdotal. I've looked over all the surveys that I could since 2003, and I have never seen a Samamish survey that took not a super deep dive, but a deeper dive into finding out. Should the community find out what all economic and demographic groups wanted our community for housing supply and factor that information into the future? What types of housing should we be adding to meet the needs of our own over time? Now, I've turned in a lot of detail tonight, I'm not going to talk about any of those. But I do want to sum something up for a second. How to make, how to remedy housing imbalance, quite simply, is to after learning what our community wants over a cycle of life in balanced and sustainable ways to lessen future amounts of some housing types that we have oversupplies of relative to our economic and demographic makeup and housing supply and increasing the amounts of housing types we have internal undersupplies of. A couple other odds and ends points. Generally speaking, I agree with and support the six community value statements. However, the four resident priorities are missing a critical top priority for Samamish, which is to alleviate local housing imbalance. And these priorities came from the statistically valid survey, which is important. But the survey itself, which I attached as PDF J, because it was not in the package directly anyway, didn't ask people if they wanted to have housing supplies more put into optimal balance, not going over the top, just a adequate amount to meet needs over time. I suggest putting a placeholder here and finding out from our community whether or not they want housing supplies optimized to meet planned and unplanned changes to reasonably be able to stay in Samamish over life. I also suggest that it's time to consider strongly having a two-part division statement, one that applies to 95% of the city and then a centers application that does thing a little bit differently in centers that are mutually beneficial and symbiotic and work together to strengthen the entire community. So in closing, I would make my same recommendation that I did at the start. To the single summary statement, add the words optimized housing supplies and then add some language for people that can come to Samamish for the natural beauty, but have adequate classy options to stay for life and that the city would cherish the holistic enrichments having modestly alleviated local housing imbalances. And as David Pyle said, what that would make so across the board. That's my comment tonight, appreciate the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Stickney, and that was our only attendee commenting tonight.
Okay. Thanks, Amber. I want to take a real quick second, there was a comment earlier in the meeting about where can you find the meeting materials for these meetings? So just as a public service, in case anybody is still listening, just point out, if you go to the city's website at samamish.us, right in the middle, it says upcoming events. Pick the event, which in this case, planning commission, regular meeting. And on the next page, you'll see under meeting references is the packet that we all use to have these meetings. So anybody in the public that's still listening, that's, it's a pretty easy thing to get to. I mean, just have to click a couple of times at samamish.us, okay? Last thing I'll say is I encourage everybody to take a quick look at the calendar. We're getting on to a, I'm looking at my other screen here at the calendar. We're getting, we're getting on to a fairly regular pace for this year of meetings. The next one is February 17th. We have two scheduled in March and, and we're going right into April as well. So for all the commissioners, if you have any conflicts with any of these meetings, please let Amber know so that we're aware of who's going to be here, especially around spring break time, so we can keep track of that we're going to have everybody or not. Jerry, I'll say one more time, welcome to the planning commission. Is there anything else from staff that we need to talk about before we adjourn?
Nothing on our end, Chair Boffman.
Great, if someone could move to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second?
A second.
And moving in second that we adjourn, all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Closed. Great, have a great evening, everyone, and we'll see you in a couple of weeks.
Thanks.
Thank you.